Call to order for Salem Kaiser School Board Meeting September twenty fourth. Tonight, we have a work session followed by a very limited business session. For board attendants, all directors are here except for Director Blacy and Director Goss. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda modifications? Not seeing any, so we'll move on to our work session, and I'm going to turn this over to our superintendent.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight to have an update on the district's suicide prevention efforts. And since we are on CCTV and we're broadcasting this, I do want to call attention to the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, which is one eight hundred two seven three talk. One eight hundred two seven three talk is the suicide prevention lifeline. With that, Lillian Govis, our Director of Community Relations, has been the lead on bringing our staff together, so I'm going to turn it over to her to do introductions. If they've requested as a presentation team that you could, if you could hold your questions till the end, they'd be happy to field as many questions as we need, but they'd like to get through the material and then open it up for questions after that. All right, Lillian.
And just apologies in advance, there are two of the four, five of us who are not well. But just to provide a little bit of historical context and greater context to the issue at large here, we know that suicide is the second-leading cause of death for young people ages ten to twenty-four. It's not just in Oregon, but it's nationwide. One out of six students in this country seriously consider suicide in the past year. And in Oregon, that rate is higher than the national average, and it's been that way for thirty years. Our age-adjusted suicide rate of seventeen point seven per a hundred thousand residents in twenty fifteen was thirty-three percent higher than the national average, and Oregon ranks thirteenth among all states in suicide incidences. This has been on the rise across the country since two thousand, and worldwide, there is one completed suicide every forty seconds. So in the time that I've shared that introduction, there has been a completed suicide. Before you, we've got our team who's going to be walking through this with us. We've got Ashawn Ely, who's our suicide prevention coordinator.
Hello.
We have Courtney McCarthy, who's one of our school psychologists who also helps with our suicide risk assessments.
Hi, thanks for having us.
David Fender, who's our coordinator for the Office of Behavioral Learning.
Hello.
And we also have a special guest from Salem Health, Leilani Slama, who's the VP of Community Engagement. So David's going to walk us through what our staffing looks like on suicide prevention.
Yep. So currently, within our school district, we have a hundred and twelve school counselors. We actually added six counselors at all of our traditional high schools. So each of our high schools now have a total of six. We have eleven school psychologists, and so two of those psychologists actually help support the Office of Behavioral Learning. And I should say, actually, four of those eleven psychologists actually support the Office of Behavioral Learning, and two of them, one is Courtney McCarthy, also works alongside our Safety Risk Management Office. We have twenty-seven therapists, and actually, not twenty-seven therapists, I apologize. We actually have twenty-seven schools who are providing onsite therapy in our, from our partnership with Trillium Family Services, Marion County and Pope County. And then we also have seven social workers. One of those social workers is Ashawn Ely, whose main role within the district is suicide risk assessment, and she'll describe that process this evening.
So the next component for that is, is going to be the training that we've rolled out for all of our staff, and Ashawn can help walk us through that.
Yes, thank you. So part of our prevention efforts this school year is we're rolling out QPR, Question, Persuade, and Refer training for all of our district's district staff. It's a two-hour training. It meets the requirements of the National Registry and Evidence-Based Practices. And basically, one of the main components of the training is to kind of walk people through and get comfortable with questioning someone who might have suicidal tendencies, being able to sit with them and persuade them to engage in self-seeking behaviors and other resources that could be helpful, and then have a warm handoff in being able to refer them to those organizations that can provide more in-depth support. This is the first year, well, we kind of started training some staff last year. We did the Office of Behavioral Learning last year. We did Safety Risk Management in July. We trained all of our school counselors last year and behavior specialists, and we did train some classified staff as well. This year, we're looking at training all of our high schools and middle schools. We are training security specialists, school-based health assistants, human resources. We trained our transportation department in August. We are going to be training another three hundred staff in December in, under David Hughes Department for Facilities, Custodial, Auxiliaries, Repro-Graphics. So we have another big chunk of staff that we'll be training in December as well.
The other segment of staff that we trained is the entire staff at Sprague High School last year.
Sprague High School, yes, thank you, and also Walker Middle School, we trained last year as well. Part of, this is, like I said, a two-hour training. I am also part of the Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition, and we are talking with QPR about what an annual refresher might be, and if we're not able to have QPR kind of spearhead that process, then as a coalition, we're going to be looking at an annual refresher for suicide prevention. And part of that coalition is we're wanting to have the same messaging going out with all the different organizations and agencies that's involved in the Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition. QPR teaches you to recognize warning signs, know how to offer help, and know how to get help and save a life.
So we wanted to give a little extra context, and a couple weeks ago, KPTV sat down with one of our counselors from McNary High School, and so we wanted to share this little clip with y'all for some additional context at the school level.
First, you know, they do so much to try and help kids succeed at things with like academics, their future careers, even sometimes disagreements with other kids. Well, now more than ever, they are tackling adult issues too, like suicide and mental health. As part of our Better Together Initiative focusing on mental wellness, Fox 12's Haley Rush sat down with a counselor who is working in a local district to discuss how their roles are now evolving. It's never been harder to be a kid or teenager if you ask school counselors. They're the ones who day in and day out talk with students who are going through something, and with mental health and suicide prevention increasingly in the spotlight, their jobs are always changing.
When it comes to mental health issues, school counselors like Melissa Miller are the ones on the front lines.
All counselors are trained in mental health, and we're the go-to in the building. So if we have any kind of a mental health crisis, they come to us first.
Miller has been a school counselor for five years, working at McNary High School in the Salem Kaiser School District. And in that short time, she's seen how topics like anxiety, depression, and suicide have switched from a conversation to an actual crisis.
It does feel like there's been an increase in just the mental health part of things.
It was about three years ago when Miller says McNary High School experienced devastating losses after two students took their lives in a couple weeks of each other.
Then, a little over a year later, we lost one of our seniors, and he was one of mine, and we were pretty close. So that was my first experience of going through something where it really hit so close to home.
And Salem Kaiser is also just coming off of a tough year. A spokesperson tells us it was last school year when six kids in the district died of suicide. Miller says the district is doing whatever it can to prevent lives lost, and that means when it comes to mental health issues, her job is always changing.
It's very thorough now. It's thorough, and as a counselor, you figure out how to make that thorough still feel genuine to the kid.
She says when they learn of someone who might need help, it usually starts with an immediate conversation, followed by a suicide risk assessment questionnaire.
Once we kind of find out what level is this crisis, then we know where to refer them to, what resources they might need, if we need to pull parents in, if it's founded or unfounded, and it just drives that direction that we need to go to make sure that they get the support that they need.
That could mean bringing in an outside mental health treatment provider, or if it's an immediate need, contacting the local health department so someone from the Youth and Family Crisis Center can come in and do an evaluation.
I always kind of go back to that saying, it takes a village. You find that it really is systemic right now.
And the district is adding to that village. Starting this school year, an extra counselor has been added to all of the high schools, so Miller and others can spend more time focusing on fewer students. The district has also hosted listening sessions at schools about teen suicide prevention and the importance of making it an ongoing conversation. And finally, the district has hired a suicide prevention coordinator who plans staff training and creates partnerships with local organizations to help get students and parents extra resources.
So it's really like getting the information up to them that says, here are the signs to look for if you're thinking something's going on with a kid that you need help with, and here's who you can go to if you don't know what to do. I mean, clear down from teacher admin to your clerical staff, your security, your janitors, everyone is involved in some way in making sure the kids are safe and taken care of.
Of course, Miller says the biggest thing they try and do is make sure they have a connection with an adult in the school and hopefully even peers. While Miller works to form meaningful relationships with all her students, she says counselors often learn of an issue from another kid or staff member reporting it to them. In studio, Haley Rush, Fox 12 Oregon.
So to go along with that, we'd like to share a little bit with you about the curriculum and where we are, and so Ashawn will be leading us through that work.
So when looking at suicide prevention curriculum, we're looking at some, three components: importance of safe and healthy coping skills and strategies, how to recognize risk factors and warning signs, and encouraging help-seeking behavior, including how to engage in-school resources as well as community resources. Elementary suicide prevention curriculum, that is, that is something that everyone kind of is trying to find, what is the great curriculum out there for elementary kids? The focus usually for elementary is on social and emotional learning, building resiliency and healthy coping strategies, encouraging help-seeking behaviors. There are some curriculum out there that people are looking at trying to implement outside of social-emotional curriculum, mainly focusing on suicide prevention. However, it's pretty spendy, so I think this is an area still that just even nationally is still an area where we need to focus our efforts on in trying to find what's best for elementary school kids. Middle school and high school, we are, have implemented this year, actually, we purchased it last August, and it was an option, as there were some other curriculum that have, that our school district had used. However, the Hazelton lifelines, it is a very research-based, and it is pretty thorough curriculum for suicide prevention and pretty well-liked, and has a good response. And so that is the curriculum that our middle and high school health teachers will be implementing this year. And there is an option for fifth graders, and that is something that we're definitely wanting to get out there to our elementary schools. Last year, some schools reached out to me, and I was able to share that, hey, we do have something on, we do have this resource, and it is available for fifth graders. This year, sorry. In our partnerships with Youth Lines and Lines for Life, they are willing to come and provide some presentations in class. And at the end of last year, Courtney and I and Erin from Communications Department, we had talked with some high school students at C-Tech, and one of the things that they said was they would write, would prefer to receive this information in person, and, and also preferably from somebody that's outside of the school. So we were able to talk with Youth Lines, they've been very eager to get involved, and so they were working with, with from secondary education around scheduling, and due to the sheer numbers of students that we have, that we were able to come up with a plan for seventh, ninth, and eleventh graders to receive Youth Line presentations this school year.
Ashawn, do you want to just give a quick overview of what Youth Lines is?
Yes. Sorry. Youth Lines is a crisis, suicide prevention, mental health crisis phone line that is staffed from four to ten, I think it's four to ten, by youth. So they train youth in regards to crisis, providing support via phone or text, so they can also text, and it's through Lines for Life up in Portland area.
One of the other things that came from the meeting with the C-Tech students, we were kind of exploring the option of creating a video for them to support them, and they said, the students were pretty clear that they didn't really care for us to make a video for them.
Videoed out.
So we listened. The other thing that they said is they didn't, they wanted to stay away from large groups. The assemblies weren't effective, they wanted a small group interaction, and so that's really where Youth Lines And so, that's really where Youth Lines hits that sweet spot for us. David, do you want to talk a little bit more about?
So, I wanted to take a moment to travel a bit more upstream and talk about some of the proactive preventative supports that we're currently implementing. Some of that is related to social-emotional learning. So, exposing kids at elementary and secondary of those social-emotional competencies. And so, last year, I came and presented on those social-emotional competencies. So, you know, looking at self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and then responsible decision-making. And so, what we're doing now is really wanting to create a whole-child approach in looking at the emotional, the physical, the creative needs of kids in addition to the cognitive needs of kids. And so, there have been a number of curriculums that have been adopted by our school district that are research-based. One of them is called Toolbox, another is a free resource called Sanford Harmony, which is wonderful and easy for teachers to implement. We also have a resource for actually our staff called Sanford Inspire, which is a resource library of trainings that are really well-done. And so, if a teacher wants more information on, you know, how do I embed these social-emotional learning competencies within the instruction that's already happening, that would be a resource for them. In addition to that, we have a social-emotional learning coach who provides training, does consultation and coaching for teachers. She'll do all staff trainings and is a wealth of knowledge in identifying curriculum and resources at the elementary level, but also at the secondary level as well. Something we're very excited about is Panorama. Again, last year, I came and briefly shared about the Panorama survey that we're implementing. Last year was our first year of, you know, adopting Panorama and then implementing the survey to around 23,000 kids across the school district. And so, what we're taking a look at is actually two specific areas. One is assessing student knowledge of these actual social-emotional learning competencies. And then, the other is looking at school climate. So, things like teacher-student relationship, a student's sense of safety within their school, and then also sense of belonging. So, we implemented this survey to third, fourth, fifth graders, all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and then a number of different grade-level groups at the high school level. We are looking at expanding that this school year. So, the majority of high school kids will be participating in the survey. And I should mention, this is something that actually happens in the fall. So, we get a baseline of where kids feel like they're at. And then again, we assess in the spring because we were trying to figure out, how do you measure the social-emotional learning curriculum and supports and teaching that we're actually providing kids? Are we seeing that move the dial or not? We also wanted to be able to identify, you know, small groups of kids or individual kids who reach out and share specific concerns. Within the survey, we actually have a free-response survey. So, kids can write anything, you know, if they're not feeling safe within a school setting, or they're feeling like they're having a hard time with a bullying issue or harassment, those sorts of things. That would be an opportunity for them to share that information. And then, our school leadership teams take that information and identify the necessary services and supports that they need to offer based on the feedback that kids are giving them. I honestly don't know of another school district in the state of Oregon that's our size that is asking kids these questions. It's, I think, we're ahead of the game in really wanting specific feedback from kids. And they had shared in some of our listening sessions last year that they just, they want an opportunity to share information, but they don't want to share the information in an assembly. They just, it's not comfortable for them. They would rather have a one-on-one conversation or have a way to be able to share that through a survey. So, we're excited about that work. There's also a piece to that that's related to family engagement and a family's sense of belonging to their school community. So, we actually piloted that survey at Auburn Parish and North last year, and now are going to implement that in the majority of our schools because we're wanting to engage parents. We want them to feel safe and comfortable within the school setting and ask for some of these resources. This is new. I mean, it's been out there, but school districts across our, you know, our state and nationally really are recognizing that this is a need that we can't ignore, and we need to make sure that parents are feeling supported too and are exposed to this information. So... And then, the, I have a short piece. At the secondary level, really excited about some pilot programs in some of our middle schools where we're looking differently. We're less punitive-based and more about, again, establishing a connection with kids, making sure that they feel safe, developing trust. And so, we looked at retooling the passrooms. So, you know, in the past, passrooms were for kids, you know, you receive a referral, you go to the passroom, you know, you do your time within the passroom, and you leave. There's not a lot of problem-solving. There isn't really that connection with the staff within that room. And so, now, we're looking at a more preventative proactive way of identifying kids who need that level of support and shifting from a punitive-based model into a more relational-based model where kids are able to identify areas of need and schools are able to set, you know, start talking about goal-setting and, you know, regularly connecting with kids. And so, some of that work is happening as well.
So, what happens when a student IDates or a student reports that they've heard that another student has communicated that they are thinking about suicide? That's where our suicide risk assessments come into play.
So, using the terminology, suicide risk assessment or suicide screening, you know, people have different varying views about that. But one thing that people agree on is that there needs to be a process in place. And there's two main components to every comprehensive school-based suicide prevention program, and that's protocols for helping students at possible risk for suicide and protocols for responding to a suicide death. And we at Salem Kaiser, we have both. We're expanding our postvention protocols to work with our community partners in regards to that. And we revised our suicide risk assessment protocols about a year and a half ago to make it more thorough, knowing that the school counselors and administrators that administer our suicide risk assessment process in the school buildings have varying degrees of comfortability and varying degrees of experience. So, we wanted to be able to have a process in place that is universal for everybody so that we are asking the right questions when we're interacting with a student who's at risk for suicide. So, we have standardized our process. The purpose of our suicide protocols and risk assessment is, and this is something that we want to make sure people know is that we can't predict behavior. There's no way that we can predict what's going to happen, but we have a responsibility to do our due diligence to provide the support when suicide becomes a concern for one of our students. And the purpose is to increase safety, reduce the risk, and promote wellness and recovery. We know that, or I have found out over the last year, that there's a lot of staff that don't know that we have a process in place. And so, part of the QPR trainings that we're doing, we're making sure that there is a flow chart that's attached to the PowerPoint so that we can have a conversation, so that staff are aware that, yes, we do have a process in place, and they know where to direct their concerns. So, our suicide risk assessment starts out with our student Level 1 interview, and that is comprised of kind of gathering information about past or recent or present suicidal ideation or behavior, gathering information about student's history, the context of different factors that are happening right now. We were looking at warning signs and protective factors as well. Those protective factors help us to kind of mitigate some of those risk factors. And also, we're looking at how we can have a connection to a reason for living. We have some evidence-based screening tools built into that assessment so that we can look at ideation, the frequency and intensity of ideations. Is there a plan? Are there behaviors leading towards a preparation? And is there intent? So, we also know that you just don't stop at the assessment, that we want to make sure that not only are we assessing, but we're collaborating and we're partnering with the student and the family on next steps, which usually lead to safety planning. And that's an essential component of any kind of assessment. You can assess and determine the level of severity of risk, but then what next? And so, our safety plans are looking at how can we provide any kind of distance between the student accessing whatever means it is that the student is talking about? So, we're looking at limiting and reducing access to whatever means that the student's talking about. We're looking at safety-proofing their environment, identifying those warning signs and triggers and risk factors so we can look at some preventative measures that we can put in place, looking at those protective factors, those things that, the resiliency things that we can build upon to have some positives in the student's life. Looking at internal coping skills and what natural supports are available for that student and that family. I already mentioned reason for living, and then also, yes, we're looking at patient services. So, we're looking at what is, can the individual do? What can we as a school do? What can the family do? And what are options in the community that can be helpful in that situation?
Okay, so, I will walk you through the suicide risk assessment process just a bit so you can get an understanding of how that process works. Concerns for suicidal ideation can come from the student themselves, can come from a peer, a parent, a staff member, a community agency partner. So, we're getting that information from a variety of sources. When we receive information about potential suicide risk for a student, first step is to gather information from that person who's reporting the concerns. So, ask them some questions about what their concerns are for the student they're reporting about. Then, we immediately conduct a interview with the student of concern. Ideally, in most situations, that's a school counselor at that student's school. However, we've also trained our administrators to do that same student interview, knowing that anybody with the proper training can do that assessment to get a good understanding of the concerns for suicide. So, during that student interview, the kinds of questions that Ashawn just talked about are asked to get a good understanding of what the concern for suicide risk is at that point. From there, parents are notified about the concern. In addition to notifying parents, we're asking them for information about what they're concerned about for their student, so gathering information from them as well. Part of the process is, like Ashawn talked about, doing safety planning, talking about safety planning, developing supports for that student that we're concerned about. And during that Level 1 process, which is something that happens at the school site with school-based staff, we're also determining the need for further assessment. So, looking at factors that would indicate that there is a higher level of concern about the student intending or having a plan to act out. So, if that, if the school team, being the school counselor and administrator and parent, determine that there is concern for a higher level of risk, then they will refer to one of our community-based mental health partners. So, we have partners in Marion County and Polk County. We would have a mental health practitioner from one of those agencies come out to the school that same day to do further assessment with our student, where they are determining any additional concerns that are present at the time, gathering information from that student. And then, they provide recommendations to our school on how to do additional safety planning, any other recommendations for supporting that student. So, then, we bring that information back to the school team, including the parent and the student, if it's appropriate developmentally for the student to be kind of part of that process, to talk about how we're going to develop a safety and support plan for that student. So, it's a collaborative process. It's not just made by one person alone, but in collaboration with all of the people we've talked about. And from there, we do ongoing monitoring of the situation. So, if we have a safety and support plan for a student, we want to be doing ongoing monitoring, making sure that we're implementing the interventions that we've identified as needs, and doing ongoing reassessment of concerns whenever additional concern should arise for the student.
So, when it comes to suicide risk assessments, it's important to note, we don't have sufficient data to do year-over-year comparisons because in Oregon, they didn't start tracking it. 2018-19 was the first year that we began tracking it. The numbers also can't be compared year-over-year because as we learned more about the warning signs, then we began performing more suicide risk assessments. So, as staff became trained in QPR, the number of suicide risk assessments went up because we saw the warning signs and we were able to perform more. So, at this time, it wouldn't be fair to be able to do a baseline, but we did want to give you some idea of the numbers that were performed. I was trying to give Ashawn a cough break there.
So, like in February of 2018 is when we revised our system, and the suicide risk assessment process came under Safety Risk and Management. So, we began collecting some numbers at that time. So, as we see, there were 327 Level Ones, suicide risk assessments that were completed and from February of 2018 when we implemented our new system till June 2018. Last school year, there was 1,105 Level Ones that were completed. That is minus any duplications in regards to the high schools, and that's because I didn't have time to count all of those up. But there were 382 from the elementary, 723 from the secondary. And then, we wanted to give a little bit of numbers in regards to Level Twos that were completed, minus the high schools. Currently, right now, our system is antiquated in regards to being able to collect data, but October, we're moving to a new system in SharePoint where it will be a lot easier to be able to draw those, any kind of numbers. But what I did want to point out is that we didn't mention anything about the safety plans. And the safety plans is what requires a lot of our staff time because, as Courtney mentioned, you are needing to at least monitor that on a monthly basis to see, is this plan effective or not? Are there Are there changes that we need to make? And there's a lot of times in our school buildings where they're doing a Level 1, and they are deciding that we don't need to move to a Level 2, but they are implementing the safety plan. And the safety plan is what I talked about earlier, about how, looking at all those different factors and prevention steps, and having an action plan. So, they're following up with the family and the student around that.
So, with that comes the connection to community resources. And one of those pieces David touched on a little bit earlier, but it comes in the form of our mental health, our licensed mental health therapists. And we've got another short news clip that kind of walks through what that looks like.
... campaign without one local school district taking a unique approach to dealing with what some say is a growing crisis.
As Foxville Seminary Theater reports, Salem Kaiser Schools are making sure students who need help with mental health issues can get it right away.
In nearly 20 years as a counselor at Salem Schools, Donna Burnett says it's never been harder to be a kid or teenager.
Kids feel isolated, kids are with social media, they're saying things to each other that they would never say to each other's face.
Growing up these days is stressful.
The anxieties are related to friends, relationships, oftentimes, there's severe family issues.
Nationally, about 1 in 5 students will be dealing with some sort of mental health issue during the school year. Here in Salem Kaiser District, that number's closer to 1 in 4.
That can range from anxiety, depression, significant previous trauma, and that ends up turning into big emotions sometimes.
The district realized it had a problem this year. First time is partnering with an outside mental health treatment provider, Trillium Family Services, to tackle it. Patricia Short works with Burnett to identify students and parents who could use some extra help.
So far, they've all seemed to be really on board. They want help, not just for their kids, but for their families.
Short says she sees the stigma that used to be attached to mental health gradually lifting across their mental school, where she's based, kids are walking in on their own.
There's a lot of things going on in the families that are stressful for kids, that we don't really recognize that they're, they're under a lot of stress for divorce, relationships, fighting.
Burnett, who often felt overwhelmed before, is grateful for the help.
This program, Trillium, was so exciting to me, to know that the kids could get the help when they needed, because oftentimes, when we prefer the parents, you know, ask them if they can get counseling, it's months before the kids can get in.
Teens who feel isolated and alone, sometimes lash out. Worst cases are what happened at Parkland, and countless other school shootings. The hope here in Salem is that kids learn to manage their stress and anxiety, and ask for help when they can.
When we can peel back the layers one by one, and give them some tools to handle those different things, they'll be light years ahead of some adults.
In Salem, as I can get at us, Box 12.
And our local, with, our goal that is, with Better Together is the same. We do want to provide parents, teens, and community members with the tools they need to face problems head-on. So, for access and resources, and really to share your stories, we do want to hear from you, so log on to kptv.com/.
So, like David shared, when we initially talked about that, we've got that, we've got those services in 27 of our schools currently. The only thing that holds us back from expanding that is just simply the availability of licensed therapists in the community. We also wanted to touch on a little bit about community collaboration, and the timing on this is good, because several of our community partners met today at Salem Health to talk about what the next steps for our Speak Up events and wraparound services look like, and so, I'll let Leilani share a little bit about that.
Sure. So, first of all, I just want to thank Superintendent Perry and her staff for inviting me and the board for allowing me to speak. This has been a really great opportunity for us. Our Board of Trustees identified Teen Suicide Prevention and Adolescent Mental Health as a long-term initiative that we really wanted to focus on in the community. And we've had a lot of community partners come to the table. As you can tell, this is a significant body of work, and you should be really proud of the work that your team here has done. We have come a very, very long ways in a very short amount of time. The listening sessions are a great example of one of the first collaborative efforts that we had. We were able to host a listening session at each of our seven feeder high schools in the area. And the intent of that was to hear from our parents and our community members about what was concerning them, what they felt were the causes and contributors to some of the challenges that our kids face. And I think as we worked our way through those seven sessions, we, we didn't quite get there. What we did get to was an understanding that there is a thirst for knowledge. People want to know what they can do to help, they want to know what they can do to prevent this from happening again in the future. And so, we were able to do quite a bit of education. We still have a lot of work to do. And so, our meeting this afternoon was to talk about next steps and how we might continue the conversation with our community, continue to build awareness, and continue to reach out to our students and see what we can do to help.
With that raising awareness piece, obviously, we've had, we've had some campaign work around Suicide Prevention Month. I think Satya pointed out, our website changes our social media information that we've been posting, the news stories that we've intentionally been pitching to try to make sure that it continues to be a topic of conversation in our community. That work doesn't end with the end of September, it continues through the school year. We know, at the beginning of the school year, we have, we have some heightened needs in our community, and then they come back at the end of the school year. So, we've, we look at our suicide risk assessments to help us guide, really making sure that our communications are matching our community's needs. And a little bit more about that, Ashawn can share with you. Our new ID cards, these are, this information is on the back of every middle school and high school ID card, student ID card. So, they've got that information available at their fingertips during each and every school day. So, it's there as just a gentle reminder that they're not alone.
Yes, and that will be something that we'll be continuing yearly, to be able to provide that information. Marion County Youth and Family Crisis Services in Marion County, they're a wonderful partner. As Courtney mentioned, they do do our Level 2 Suicide Risk Assessment screenings for Marion County schools. And then, we have Polk County Mental Health, who does their Level 2 Suicide Risk Assessment screenings for all of our West Salem schools. And as David mentioned, both Marion County and Polk County are also providing onsite mental health services in some of our school buildings. Salem Health, they've been an excellent partner, they assisted in helping us get some of our QPR facilitators trained in December. They provide training, support when we're needing extra bodies for QPR trainings, especially when we have the big groups like transportation and coming up in December. And Salem Power, Leilani and I have been partnering just on kind of the different initiatives that we're trying to get going in our community, and the Speak Up events was the first one. Childhood Health and Associates have been an excellent partnership this last year, school year, that we kind of began to bridge a relationship. Dr. Lampert over there and I invited me to come speak at one of their staff meetings, and then also at the Marion-Polk Integrated Behavioral Health Clinicians Meeting, which had social workers, doctors, nurses, from the varying different pediatric clinics in our community. And we're really trying to bridge that gap, knowing that some of the students that we serve are also receiving services in some of those different agencies. And they've been able to talk with families about providing some information to the schools when there's a need, and so, we've, they've been calling to let us know about certain situations that we're not aware of, so that we're able to reach out to the student and family. So, hoping that that's going really well with Childhood Health, and hoping that we can kind of expand that to some of our other medical and mental health organizations as well. Youth Live, we talked about their partnership, they participated in the Speak Up events, they're going to continue to do classroom presentations, and they were not able to attend our meeting today, but they have expressed interest to continue to be involved in whatever efforts that we're rolling out to our community as well. Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition is comprised of a bunch of organizations between Marion and Polk County, and agencies that serve our community across the lifespan. And I attended those meetings quarterly, and we also have different work groups, so I'm a part of the school-based work group and the training work group as well.
With the community piece, Leilani's brought some information from Salem Health, and in your board packets, you have a report that they recently released that's much more in-depth than what we'll be going through here today, so I'll turn it over to Leilani.
Sure. So, I just wanted to emphasize, this is not a school district problem, it's not a hospital problem, it's not a family problem, it really needs to be a community solution. And I will give you an example that is probably not super complimentary to just start that off, but our own hospital has a group of trauma nurses who are amazing. They go out to the schools and they do presentations on all kinds of things. They talk about how, you know, be sure you're, you're wearing your seatbelt, and make sure you're not smoking, and those types of things. And what we have found is, over the last three to four years, they've shifted almost every single presentation that they're making to suicide prevention. I wasn't aware of that, I'm the captain of our strategic initiative around suicide prevention, and I found that out a couple of months ago. So, they got to 2,345 students last year in 20 schools in Marion and Polk Counties. I'm really, really proud of that work. Just tells you there's a need out there, and it tells you we're not all talking to each other about what's happening. So, it's exciting that over the last year, we've really come together and started to coordinate our efforts, and we'll continue to do that. This pack that you have in your packet is just a summary of the work that we did last year, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that. The synopsis of what we learned in our listening sessions, as well as what the hospital intends to focus on moving forward, is included in there. Just to reiterate what Ashawn and Lillian have shared with you, this is statistics from our diagnosis codes, from our emergency rooms at Salem Hospital and West Valley Hospital. The numbers aren't really as important as the trend, but you can see, the first three bars is anxiety, and the increase in the number of diagnosis over the past three years of students seen, students ages nine to 24 seen in our emergency room. You can also see the same trend in depression and suicidal ideation. We did see a slight decrease in suicide attempts in the emergency rooms last year. Unfortunately, that success is somewhat tempered by the fact that we had more completed suicides in Marion County than, than we did in the previous year, about 60% more. So, we are not beginning to make a dent. However, we are similar to what Ashawn was referencing with the suicide risk assessments. We believe that the attention and the awareness that has been raised around this issue might be the reason why we have seen more students in the emergency room for suicidal ideation. Our goal now is to figure out how we can intercept those students sooner. How can we improve access and create opportunities for them to get the help they need before it reaches the point of needing to be in the emergency room? The final slide that I just wanted to share with you is a general overview of the scope of our work in Year 1. We wanted to increase the number of community members that were trained in the QPR, as Ashawn was referencing, and with the help of Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition and some of our other partners, we were able to train over 3,000 individuals. We also were able to implement suicide risk assessments for every patient that comes into our emergency room eight years and older. We're really marrying the work that the school district is doing, we're using the same assessment tool, slightly modified for our younger students. We're creating safety plans that are very similar, and one of the goals that Ashawn and I have is to figure out a way to HIPAA and FERPA-compliantly come up with a way to inform schools when we do see a student who is in, in the emergency room for a suicide risk assessment or ideation. Finally, we're really focusing on continuing our work around community and prevention, and hoping that we can do a better job of reaching out to our kids. We feel like that's one area where we haven't been able to really hear from them about what would help. Ashawn and Lillian have made better inroads to that, stopped us short on our wonderful idea of creating a video, glad to, glad to know that before we invested the time and resources. But, we do really want to focus more on, how do we increase that peer-to-peer relationship building and prevention? So, that will be our work as we continue forward. I just want to, again, appreciate, express my appreciation for the district's investment in this work.
There's a major component to our work that we, that we absolutely have to discuss, and that's how we support our LGBTQIA students. We know that they seriously contemplate suicide three times more often than heterosexual peers, and they're five times more likely to have attempted suicide. Before you, you have several statistics from the Trevor Project, and they, that's a fantastic resource, as we kind of help guide our communications around that. You know, we also see that 40% of transgender adults have reported having made a suicide attempt. With that, in Oregon, we have some really staggering statistics from the Oregon Health Authority, that nearly half of our 8th graders, who are LGBTQ youth, have contemplated it, and a third of transgender 8th graders have attempted suicide. So, that, and I think these slides were maybe flipped in your packets, I'm sorry. So, that really helps unpack some of the reasons why our district has really made a conscientious shift in acknowledging, recognizing, celebrating, creating space for LGBTQ youth. Just this year, you passed the first Pride Month proclamation ever in Salem Kaiser Public Schools history. We had a presence at the Capitol Pride event, and that was the first time ever. We had students from South Salem High School who were there manning the tent, we had students from the McNary Gay-Straight Alliance who were there in the tent with us, and we were soliciting feedback from people who were there about how we can, A, better support our LGBTQ youth, and B, what they'd like to see us do in terms of suicide prevention in their community. You know, we've changed our social media for Pride Month and Transgender Day of Visibility. Those are public displays of inclusiveness that are very intentional, and what we heard from our students, you know, it may not seem like much, but to our students, it created a little bit of space for them where they were seen. We also, I get teased a lot, because when a student complains to me about us doing a bad job, I hire them. So, a student came to me to share, from South Salem High School, to share where we were maybe lacking in our work around LGBTQ youth, and a lack of a policy, and how we train staff. And so, he's transgender and queer, and so, I hired him, of course, and he's on our communication staff, and he's helping us identify the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in the school district, in terms of how we support our LGBTQ youth and our staff, and how we can be better. With our bond measure, we're building gender-neutral bathrooms in the new major construction, and that's been a recurring theme from our community, is that they need a safe place to, and then also, supporting our gay-straight alliances at our schools. I also know there's a student in the audience now from South Salem High School who's working on a project for his IB program, and he doesn't know that yet, but we all have him on our And so, we're really working to try to make sure that we are being reflective of our students, just like with CTEC telling us, please don't make us a video. We say, okay, so let's change the course and adapt, and be reflective. With that comes policy and legislation work this year, and in your packets, you have a copy of Senate Bill 52. Addy's Act was passed. It was named after a young girl came out as transgender and really struggled in her school. She completed her suicide in 2017, and from that grief comes this legislation to help us better support our LGBTQ youth. It requires school districts to plan how to address and prevent suicides among students, and I think that what you've seen here today demonstrates that our district is being very responsive to that legislation. It goes into effect in January, however, we will review with Paul Decopoulos and ensure, but we are hoping to be fully compliant much sooner than that tomorrow.
The date's July 1, 2020.
Oh, July 1, 2020, I misspoke. The other piece of that is suicide prevention policy. It aligns with Senate Bill 52. It aligns with Senate Bill 52. You've got a copy of our policy in your board packet. You also have two pieces of work instruction. One is for in-school attempts, and the second is for out-of-school attempts. Those work instructions, clearly, we're working to train our staff in question, persuade, refer, so that everyone has those basic tools. But those work instructions are meant to empower all classes of employees, regardless of bus driver to custodian to a communications director to a superintendent. What do you do when you come into a contact with a student who is ideating, and what are the steps that we take to keep them safe? This also helps those employees who may not feel entirely comfortable with the QPR training to really be empowered in that position. And so both of those are in your packets. The other piece that's in your packet is a news story about the new mental health days in Oregon. This was led by, this piece of legislation was led by four Oregon high school student activists. It allows students to have excused absences for mental health days. You know, when we're talking about the anxiety that we're seeing, being diagnosed, this is a direct response to that. This has already been signed into law and is in effect now, and we're learning and growing with this as we see, we don't have any data to report on at this time of what we're seeing in our schools in terms of absences related to mental health days. So from there, next steps. Ashawn.
All right. One of the areas that we want to really focus on is looking at how we can implement some peer-led interventions that build a climate and culture to increase connectedness, as David was mentioning in some of the panorama surveys. Youth aren't feeling connected, whether it's to adults or to students, and so we really want to get some peer-driven programs that can kind of really have our youth kind of spearhead some of that in our school buildings. We will continue to look at our curriculum and making sure that we have some great resources for our schools. Outward mindset opportunities. Talked with Chris and last year around some of the efforts that they were doing and wanting to continue, and so we're just kind of seeing how we can blend some of those resources and services as well. Focus is always on continuing to build partnerships, looking at who is not at the table per se, and seeing how we can bridge that gap as well. Continuing to build connections with family. People may think that all families want us to be involved when suicide is a concern, and that's not necessarily the case. So we're wanting to continue to build our outreach to families and let them know that our process is a partnership and that we're wanting to be here as, to be a support to them, and that it's not a punitive process, but it's a supportive process. Continuing staff training and professional development, as I had mentioned earlier about trying to identify a yearly refresher. And we do have a Screeners Handbook. It's pretty outdated, and we've changed our protocol and process, so that is on the to-do list to revise that as well.
So that gets us to the end of this presentation, and gets Ashawn a water break. And with that, we'll open up the floor to any questions that may be had.
And before we get to questions too, I just wanted to say to Ashawn and Courtney, who are on the front lines, I know David and Launey do a lot of work too, but they're actually on the front lines with the stories, the kids, keeping kids safe, the safety plans, advising our schools, and the acceleration of this work has been really pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, so I will open up for questions, and be sure you're speaking into your microphone.
What role does bullying play in suicide? And do we track any of that? I mean, I know it plays a role in some of them, but are we keeping track of that? Because the biggest concern I hear from parents is about bullying in our schools, and with our, the zero tolerance policies that many schools have, the victim doesn't feel like they have an opportunity to protect themselves to the point where they put up with it until, you know, it's too late.
I think Courtney's ready to, Courtney's ready to answer that one. We've talked about it in our planning.
Yeah. It's a great question. Does bullying play a role? I think there's certainly information out there that bullying does play a role in suicidal ideation. Is it a cause? There's really no evidence to suggest that there is any kind of single cause for suicidal ideation, but bullying is a risk factor, as are many risk factors, you know, family trauma, trauma in a student's background. So bullying is one of those things that can increase risk for suicidal ideation, so we certainly take that very seriously. And I think the challenge that we often run into in school districts is there is bullying that is very obvious to others, and then there's bullying that may not be as obvious, and it may be something that's perceived by the student that isn't necessarily perceived by other people. So as a district, we just need to make sure that we're really getting the message out to students and to their families to report concerns about bullying when they have them, because we, you know, certainly will intervene. We have policy around bullying, but we need to know when it's happening to be able to intervene.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Perry, and I just want to say thank you very much. You guys have done a marvelous job, and it's just been a very difficult and emotional topic. So I just want to once again remind what Superintendent Perry announced in the beginning of the suicide crisis number, for those who are watching and those who are here. I also want to start by a little text I got from one of our students who died by suicide from Sprague. His name is Ben. Ben's mother just texted me, and she wanted to be here, so she said, please talk about Ben, because, so when I was campaigning for this role, she came to Sprague, and she spoke Ben's story. So it really, it's a very important topic, and Prayer for Sprague is a place where we had over 1,000 families sitting there. So it really has, so I'm so glad to hear that you're thinking through all the steps, not just to intercept suicidal risk, how to prevent a contagion. You seem to have a very nice way to flow so that teachers level, you train them, and then you thought through a gatekeeper training, and now we have a possibility of getting the students and the students. So all the levels are there, and we have tied it up. Moving forward as our community advances, there are two things that really struck, I mean, you know, your panorama captures that. It talks about connectedness, because that's one thing in such a complex system. It's a very important indicator in my mind, which saves lives and also keeps them in school, gets them good grades, and they graduate. The ones who start feeling that nobody cares about them, and they start, you know. The second thing is engagement you talked about, right? That's obvious, this is coming. So that also is a good indicator to say if they are engaged, or they're showing up, or they're kind of stopping out before dropping out, as they say, right? You can see the trajectory coming. So as a parent, if I walk into a school system, say, let's say I move from Pennsylvania, bring my kid, how will I know? First of all, my kid may be scared and shy to come into a big school system, so. So what is the way in which we can get this out to every parent, everybody in the community, so that school can become a hub around the child? And then think of overlapping as a chairman. You mentioned about bullying, school safety, and then you have already the PBIS system. There's already that three-tiered system. You have it, right? Are there any thoughts about combining all those so that it becomes a little bit easy and manageable? The corollary to that is if there is a way you can track it, then maybe report to the board or have a standing committee of family and community members who feel confidence that their child will be safe.
That's definitely something that we want to do as a school district. So in looking at multi-tiered systems of support, really as the umbrella, we have a variety of different things that fall under that umbrella, including, you know, behavioral health, including, you know, academic supports and interventions, many, many other things, panorama, all of the school-wide systems and supports that we have in place to make sure that students feel safe and parents feel engaged. We still have some work to do there, though. That's why we're looking at family engagement. We're soliciting feedback from parents to figure out what can schools do so we can create a hub, you know, for our students.
You know, there are some systems that are, like University of Maryland has the SHAPE System, which is a nationally accredited quality, and I believe it's one of those quality accreditation thing, which is in collaboration with SAMSHA. It's a free system. It's like, we pay the federal tax anyway. So there is a free way in which some of the questions that you are asking about curriculum, the way to implement, because, now, this is a good starting point, because if, at some stage, if I were to ask, how many are in tier one? How many are in tier two? How many are in tier three at a real time? And how many more counselors you'll need? What kind of resource you'll need? What kind of memorandum of understanding you'll have to have in the community, which is going to change? So how are we going to keep track of 43,000 and 5,000 employees and demographics? I'm not sure about that.
Well, and we do, we actually do have school leadership teams that take a look at the data at tier one, at tier two, at tier three, and based on something called Swiss data, so referral-based data, attendance, anecdotal notes from teachers connecting with kids, panorama, all of those things together, we identify what are the specific needs, what do we, you know, if anxiety is the prevailing concern, you know, within a middle school, how are we identifying a curriculum and providing a tier-two support to meet that need, which is something that we've done for our middle schools, and we had a multidisciplinary group get together and identify an evidence-based curriculum, because a lot of kids at the middle school level were saying, I have severe anxiety, and I'd like some support. And so that was a way we identified the specific need, found a curriculum, and have delivered that to our school counselors. So that's just one example, but each school has a leadership team that regularly meets to look at the, you know, tiered data, and what is it telling us, and what are the specific supports that we have to provide based on that data.
Do you report it to the board on a regular basis, the tier percentage? What is the, you know, penetration of your plan in terms of scaling it up to such a huge system?
I don't think, I don't think we've done any systematic report to the board on data, so you'd have to decide as a board, is that something you'd like? And then we'll shift our attention, and if that's important, then we'll work on. But it has to be a board decision if you want to shift our attention that way, because we can do, I mean, we've done PBIS reports, we can get referral data, we can do all of that, but you have to decide as, kind of as a whole board, what metrics are important to you.
Because ultimately, the resource you need, so if you have to start thinking of what kind of extra resource you need, it'll be good to have a standing report, and also to have a standing committee, which has teachers, the school counselors, and leaders of the school, and also the community members, because as you rightly said, Leilani, this is everybody's business. So somebody with lived experience, children, you know, at high-risk community or the families, so they can hold me and hold us accountable. That's what I'm thinking in my head. Go ahead.
Danielle, you had a question?
Yeah. So I've heard a few times that you're engaging parent input. How's that happening? Because I'm a parent, and I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah. So that was actually piloted this last year, the Family Engagement Survey. So that was done during conferences this spring. So again, it was at Auburn Parish and North High.
Okay.
Yeah. So this year, we're including as many schools as possible, and that would happen during fall conferences. And so there's actually an app, so you could access it, actually, it's not an app, but it's web-based, so parents can access it on their phone. There will be kiosks where if parents, you know, aren't able to access it by their phone, there would be computers set up for them to quickly take the survey. Shouldn't take longer than five to 10 minutes to complete. So that should be something that you'll be engaged in, you know, this fall during conferences.
So will it go out in a notification of conference that that survey is available for parents who are unavailable to attend, to know that that option is there for them beforehand? Or is this only going to be like, hey, hopefully you showed up, but if you didn't, you could have had access to that?
Yeah. That's something that we did, so sending a flyer home for, so any parent that can't access the conference would be able to access it from a home computer or their phone to provide some feedback to, because there were some, some parents that obviously weren't able to attend but wanted to share that information, so.
So to clarify, you're saying that the notification of that survey would be on the notice going home with conferences?
From the school. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
I have one.
Jesse?
Yeah. Well, first, I wanted to say thank you guys for being here. Thank you for taking the time out of your day, especially it's so late in the evening when you're, everybody's sick. We appreciate that. Don't appreciate getting sick, but you know, it's fine. Just from the presentation, I mean, it seems very clear to me that, I mean, it looks as if we've been taking big steps to address suicide prevention. I mean, just from little things like the ID on the card, like all the phone numbers on ID cards, to partnering with Salem Health and partnering with these other places, I think that's, I think that's really cool, and I think it's a great thing for our community to know and be aware of, just that way, when we're sending kids to school, you know, we can know that there are systems in place. But a question that I had in regards to this was, while these systems are awesome, and it's great to see that we're doing this, are there things that we've seen other districts be successful at in this, in sort of the suicide prevention area? And have we looked at other districts from other states even? Or are there any, is there anything else that we're looking at that we haven't implemented yet?
And I know.
Go ahead.
Over the summer, the former principal from Sprague and I were at a national conference for school administrators, talking about this very topic. And what we saw from that room, hundreds of school districts were in attendance, you know, there was a school district from one of the largest cities in New Mexico, and they said that they don't even say the S-word, right? They said that they won't even say suicide. How, like, how could you say that? And so that was a great opportunity for us to mine best practices, and everything that you see here that we discussed today comes from national best practices, comes from the Trevor Project, comes from SAMSHA, comes from the National Suicide Prevention Center, Resource Center. So we are mining the best practices from across the country. When we were in a meeting earlier today, we learned of something that another school district's doing, and Christie already reached out to that superintendent to see, do you have any data on the effectiveness of that? Is that something we should look into? And so 100%, we are always, this is something that school districts across the country are trying to figure out at the same time. And so that resource sharing later this month, or in October, will be at COSA, the Confederate, the School Administrators Meeting for Secondary Principals, doing this very same thing, finding out what other school districts in Oregon are doing, and if there's anything we can learn from them and what we can share with them.
And also looked at Maine, Maine, kind of, Maine has been kind of a spearhead in regards to developing suicide prevention plans, so we've looked at that as well. Actually, I got the idea about the ID cards from Beaverton School District. So we are definitely open and continuing to research and look at what's working well and where we can grow as well, so yes.
That's awesome. And I had one more, if I can. I forgot, I was trying to, I was trying to find it in my notes. My handwriting's really bad, so that's my life. But one of the programs that we were talking about was, we were giving therapy to, it was therapy or like counseling sessions with.
Licensed therapists?
Yes. But the limitation was the amount of therapists that we have available. Is that correct? Is. Is that correct? So what is, are there, is there anything, is there any way that that's being addressed? Maybe not by us, but by other community leaders?
Leilani, how's the insight into this?
So access is a continual problem.
It's access.
It's access. So we don't have enough mental health providers, and we also have access issues around insurance. So commercial insurance makes it much more difficult to be reimbursed based on the number of, number of hours of experience of a, it's very complicated. So ironically, if you are on the Oregon Health Plan, you have better access to mental health services than if you're commercially insured. So that's a challenge for us. We are behind the scenes, we're not trying to engage any of school district employees in this yet, but from a provider standpoint, we're trying to analyze what is the gap? How do we solve that gap? And then that's also that, I referenced that tier work, so do kids, you know, so they come to the emergency room for suicidal ideation, they don't necessarily need to be hospitalized, they don't necessarily need to see a psychiatrist, maybe there's a level where we can help them earlier, you know, with a different intervention. So we're looking at what, what other interventions can we, because we can't just overnight come up with 100 new mental health providers, I wish we could. But, yeah, so that, that is, that's a challenge, but it's one that we're fully aware of and we're working really hard to address it.
Okay. Do you, do you feel confident that, oh, at least over time, I mean, of course, like with any of this, right, we just started tracking things a few years ago? And so being, do you feel confident that moving forward, that this is going to be something that our community will be able to address, or do you, do you kind of see it as kind of a, something that we'll keep seeing?
I think it's something we'll continue to see, because I think that we're becoming more and more aware of mental health issues than we have been in the past. I can't say there are more mental health issues, but we're certainly more aware of them. It makes me feel good that Courtney's nodding while I'm saying this. So am I confident that we'll ever have enough mental health providers? No. Am, am I, am I sure that, that the community is aware of the problem and working to address it? Yes, we are.
Okay, good, thank you.
And that's partly why safety planning is really important, because there outpatient mental health services or hospitalization is not an option always. And so we really have to think outside the box and brainstorm other ways to be supportive.
Satya?
Yeah. You know, there is going to be a shortage of manpower. If you are going to look at it in that way, that's where we have a beautiful system called the three-tier system, right? So we really have to start thinking outside the box, and we have to start thinking in terms of connecting with others, either through telemedicine or other ways in which, and then start looking at what kind of resources we need, what kind of resources we need to build over time. You know, start thinking, if it was an airplane, A, you don't want the airplane crashing, B, you want to pick up the fault before it starts crashing, right? So if our school is a high-reliability organization, A, we should make suicide a never event, and then start finding how to identify a pathway to suicide. And that's where the nice thing is, school is already collecting tons of data. You're collecting engagement data, you're collecting connectedness data, probably teachers are spending more time collecting data than a lot of other things, right? So we need to start using the numbers and data we collect more smartly so that we can start intercepting. And then we really have to have a good implementation plan, because it's like a Swiss cheese. We don't want all the holes setting up, for God's sake, right? So we have to intercept it, and these thoughts will come in waves, so hopefully, once we intercept it and think, and all of us can play a role. Not everybody needs, even if you have all the manpower, we can't have a 47 teacher sitting, or counselor sitting, or psychologist sitting. So one of the big area we may, I'm thinking in my head, is I quickly read the policy, I didn't have time to go through, we may have to start really that family and the community piece engagement, that's going to be the, an area that we may have to robust outreach, maybe having the com- community to be with us, along with our school employees, so almost like a standing committee to keep giving us a feedback in real time, because I want the families to feel confident that school is going to be a safe place. So that's one area, and it's going to be a work in progress, to be honest, it's going to be a work in progress. I see, you will need resources, you will need help for the next four, five years before you can hardwire and scale it up. None of the 180 school districts have a policy. What you have done is an amazing job. I want you to know that. I spoke to the PA, the policy director, I forget her name, she says, "We haven't started work," O D E, or Department of it, they haven't started the work. So what you guys have done is just an amazing job, but I want you to really go home feeling that fantastic work you have done. So please, people are willing to help and wanting to help us, and they are very pleased that you have done this work. They can, families are eagerly waiting to see answers to this, and so just, let's kind of get everybody to roll up their sleeve and show up. You're going to get more help than you want.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. That was a lot of good information. Let's take a seven-minute break before we continue.
I'm so proud of you all, I just want you to know. Good job. Good job.